Welcome to our Commissioners Meeting. This is January twenty-third. Sorry, the last one got cancelled on rain, but we're glad everyone's able to stay home safe and dry. So please rise for our opening ceremony, do the pledge of allegiance, and then remain standing for a moment of silence to give thanks and praise in a manner of your choosing.
(Inaudible)
It's my understanding we have an amendment to the agenda. We're requesting a proclamation, P R O twenty-two-four zero-zero-three?
Yes, Mayor, requesting to add item G-one under Presentations to the Agenda: Proclamation in memory of Commissioner David G. Barnes.
Could I get a motion to amend the agenda?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
The agenda is now amended. We will start off with public comment. We had two folks signing up for public comment this evening. We'll go ahead and begin with Rich Geist. Have I got that right, Rich? Awesome, sauce.
Good evening. My name is Rich Geist. I am owner of Waxaw Creamery. I am not a resident. I would like to first thank the board to take the time to hear my continued concerns on the matter of the social district in the downtown area. As you may remember, I addressed the board during the November meetings and provided a number of reasons not to amend a social district downtown. Some of the speaking points were changing the environment or feel of the area. The negative effect, open containers can impact our businesses. Just opting out is not a real solution. The true percentage of businesses supporting a change, a large percentage is neutral and should not be considered as a supporting factor. The health of the downtown area, which is strong, and referencing towns like Monroe to compare the implementation of such a district. Not sure using Monroe as an example is a good reference since they just have permitted a new methodology in the downtown area. With your retreat scheduled for this week and the social district subject scheduled to be discussed, I ask you to openly discuss and consider the following. Would you normally consider making a change regardless of topic with such a low percentage of support? Again, please do not consider neutrality as support. Consider the negative impact on businesses as well as the residents in the downtown area if implemented. Underage shrinking has become a growing concern, and this will only exacerbate the situation. Become more transparent with the surveys results, so everyone can see how the area feels. We are asked to complete surveys regularly and have seen no results, perhaps post results on the town website. I would also like to recommend the board schedule a meeting with the business owners and residents in the immediate area to have an open and interactive conversation on this matter before moving forward. Closed meetings and one-sided conversations are not productive in addressing this matter and only creates frustration during the process. Finally, I would like to encourage everyone both here and watching at home to reach out to the board and express your concerns on this matter. Unless the people speak up, the board will not have the information they need to make a productive decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. And then next up, we have Edward Eland.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, to the Commissioners of the Town of Waxaw, to the town clerk, town manager, town attorney, and above all, the citizens of the Town of Waxaw, both here and those who are watching. I stand to correct the record on several posts that have been made about several developments that are in the Town of Waxaw that were all done compliantly. The Old Town Village specifically, which is located on North Providence Street, consists of sixty-three townhomes and three cottage houses that will actually be built, or three homes that will be built. Pricing will be five-hundred thousand to seven-hundred thousand dollars, and once they're platted, I'm sure all sixty-six will be sold immediately. To correct the record for the new councilmembers who have actually granted some information that the public must know and understand, this was the Jim Crow property of the nineteen-forties. It took eighty-three years to bring it to market. I worked on it nine years. The Town of Waxaw specifically held its finger, this board years ago, held its finger on its non-development in an attempt to keep the black soldiers who were coming back from the war not to grow their communities like equally like all other communities in the Town of Waxaw and here in Union County. This is a great project in that it will look like downtown Waxaw. It also brings a unique trail to the town for people to be able to transport, walk and fork their babies and their families. It also saved lives for all the trees that were cut there simply because not allowing it to be built and cared for for those eighty-three years, trees were dying because of the canopy. It was so wet that the sun could not even penetrate the ground. Saved your kids and your children from limbs and trees falling on their heads when they actually tracked through that area. This land was transferred from the Town of Waxaw to Union County in May of nineteen-eighty-seven because somebody recognized that they had done an injustice due to the color of the people's skin based on how they had managed this particular project. I just simply wanted to correct the record in that this project is eighty-three years overdue, and it was already built for the highways and for the land use that it was presently done. As I take my seat, I just wanted you to know that Waxaw not only gets this trail, businesses also get a tremendous amount of traffic that will be walking from four blocks, which will help businesses and be able to keep all those businesses in business. And finally, it will be interesting, as all of us will be looking, I know that I will, the tax dollars that it will generate over the next few years. It will be interesting that you and this body and bodies to come after where they spend the millions of dollars that we have brought to market to actually do the things that Waxaw needs. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Edward. Next up, we have the approval of the consent agenda. Could I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
All in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda is approved. Next up, we have a series of recognitions. We will go ahead and start with our Eagle Scout. We have Michael Cavalaro. Please come forward.
Good evening. I am here to present a wonderful Eagle Scout project that Michael here has done for Town Creek Park. He has created three new seating areas along the trail that encompass the Town Creek Park. And the lucky thing about these wonderful benches are they're still there with all of our wonderful water events that we've had recently. So very proud of Michael, and he did a great job through the process for his Eagle Scout, and we're here to celebrate him tonight.
Thank you. It's nice to see them bolted to concrete. Next up, we'll move forward with the introduction of some of the town's newest employees. We have Tony Helms and Mason Piddock.
Good evening, Board. Thank you. Yes, I'd like to introduce Tony Helms. He's going to be a full-timer with us. Unfortunately, he's not feeling very well tonight, so he's not here. And I also want to introduce Mason Piddock. He's going to be our part-timer with us at the new downtown park.
Like you said, I'm excited to start working here. It's nice to meet all of you. I hope to be able to improve the community in the Town of Waxaw, let's do Parks and Recreation, and I'm looking forward to see what I'm able to do. Thank you.
Next up, we have a Morgan Miller. New to Waxaw.
Hi, everybody. I'm Justine Haynes, and I'm your program manager with the Waxaw Parks and Recreation Department. Today I have Morgan Miller. She is our new program coordinator. She will be over at our new barn facility that we are hopefully opening up soon. So if you guys ever drive by there, just make sure to stop on by and say hi to Morgan.
Hello, I'm Morgan Miller. It's very great to meet all of you and see all of your faces, and I'm very excited to see what programs I can bring to the Town of Waxaw. Thank you.
Thank you, Morgan. Welcome. Next up, we have Alara Boltminsky.
Hey, guys. I'm Ashley. I'm the Business Development Director for the Town of Waxaw. I'm introducing Alara, our new Business Development Coordinator today. She started with us about three weeks ago, and she's assisting with our marketing and promotion of downtown as well as some Downtown Waxaw Association events. Alara actually is a former downtown business owner, so if you guys ever shopped at Siella Boutique right there across from Emmett's, she used to own that for about five years. She also served as the secretary on our Downtown Waxaw Association for the last year, as well as our Downtown Promotions Committee for the last two years. Alara's lived in Waxaw for the last twelve years with her husband and her two kids. So she's got a sixteen-year-old at Cata and a twelve-year-old at Parkwood Middle. So we're super excited to have her on board. I am thrilled. Like I said, it's only been three weeks, and we're already making really huge strides in downtown and just, you know, improving our communication with our business owners and with our community. So, thank you. I'm just really excited for the opportunity and grateful to be able to continue serving my town, which I live and love, and then look forward to working together to strengthen our downtown district.
Thank you. Welcome. Next up, we have our deputy clerk, Randy Stroud.
Good evening. I am pleased and honored to introduce to you Randy Stroud, Waxaw's new deputy clerk. Randy comes to us from the Venus Group. She always meets the challenge head-on and puts a hundred percent of work in her work. She's also going to apply the skills that she's cultivated over the years into the deputy clerk role. On a personal note, Randy is married and has three beautiful children. She grew up on a farm and has carried those roots throughout her life. Her passions are rescuing and caring for all animals, and I mean all animals. She has snakes and things like that. She even has a mini farm at home, and she has a pet raccoon named Ricky. So she has a small cake business. She decorates specialty cakes, and she's just amazing. She's already jumped in gung-ho and started working, and she's just going to be amazing. I'm honored and privileged to have her as Waxaw's family, and...
I just want to thank the Town of Waxaw for giving me this opportunity. It's a huge step for me, and I cannot wait to fill the shoes of deputy clerk.
What are we doing? Bring Your Pet to Work Day? I was thinking the raccoon, not the snake. We could do the snake another day. Most snakes are pretty well behaved most of the time. Next up, we have the recognition of Barbie Bruce. She has received the Municipal Clerk Certification.
Welcome back up here, Barbie. Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. The Certified Municipal Clerk Program is designed to enhance the job performance of the clerk in small and large municipalities. The program runs for twenty days over a year, which provides instruction in subjects involving the corresponsibilities of municipal and county clerks. Topics covered in the Institute are open meetings law, public records law, ordinance authority and adoption, local government board procedures, agenda preparation, meeting minutes, public notices, oaths of office, and quasi-judicial proceedings. To receive the C M C or the Certified Municipal Clerk designation, participants must meet the criteria established by the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. Completion of the certification institute fulfills the education requirements for that designation. Barbie has fulfilled those requirements. I can't tell you how proud we are of her. She's been in this trade now for a good little while in Marvin and now in Waxaw, and that is the pinnacle of municipal clerkism, I guess you could say. So just can't say how proud we are that she was able to achieve this designation, Barbie. Thank you for the opportunity, for allowing me to continue my training. I've been a clerk for twenty-eight years, and I love my job. I've loved being here with Waxaw. I've dedicated my whole life to public service, and that's what I knew I wanted to do. And it's been a privilege to work with you, the board, all the staff, and the citizens here in Waxaw. It's a lovely family to be a part of, and I truly see Waxaw as my second family because I see you more than I see my real family. But it is. It's a wonderful experience, and this is a wonderful family to be a part of. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Congratulations, Randy.
I have one quick bonus recognition.
Congratulations.
Todd Matthews, as of yesterday, has been with the town for twenty-two years.
So if anyone knows where the bodies are really at. Alrighty, we also have a staff recognition, another certificate.
Yes. Good evening. My name's Lisa Thompson. I'm the Planning and Inspections Director here for the town. I'm here to recognize Senior Planner Blair Israel, R L A, A I C P, C Z O, and now G I S P. He now has more letters in his credentials than in his actual name. G I S P is G I S Professional Certification. This was earned through experience, contributions to the G I S community, and educational background. So we're very proud of Blair and glad he can take us into the twenty-first century with our M A F E. So congratulations.
Are we at the twenty-first century already? Gosh. Yeah, this was an important step, I think, in just learning more about G I S, geographic information systems. There's a lot to it, and there's a lot of responsibility in many ways in which you can serve the town, particularly in getting information out in a way that's easily understood, preferably by people who can read maps. But, you know, we add whatever information we can to just make things transparent and also just explore ideas. There's a lot of the information that the town works with is geographic in nature, and so G I S provides us a tool to really picture that, analyze it, and come up with new vision for how the town manages itself and manages its road. So it's a pleasure to be here. I've been working in G I S since the days when I was at Central Illinois Regional Council, which goes back to the early two thousands, and so I'm glad to be able to carry on that part of my career here. And it's great to be here tonight and working with you. Thanks.
Thank you. So next up, we have a proclamation in memory of Commissioner David G. Barnes. Jeff Wells, would you like to read this?
Thank you, Mayor. And Melissa, would you mind coming up here too? Just several days ago, Waxaw lost one of its best civil servants, and we found it very fitting to have a proclamation in memory of Commissioner David G. Barnes, and I would like to read that, present his daughter, Melissa, who's in town here, with this proclamation as well as another little special gift. So I'll read from it. "Proclamation in memory of Commissioner David G. Barnes. Whereas the Town of Waxaw and its citizens lost a dedicated public servant with the passing of David G. Barnes. Whereas David G. Barnes served multiple terms as Commissioner and Mayor Pro Tem from nineteen-seventy-nine to two thousand and seven, as well as serving on many town committees. Whereas David G. Barnes was a great advocate for the town and its citizens, carrying out his responsibilities as a public servant with a dedication to the Town of Waxaw and its citizens as he sought continuously to make Waxaw a better place to live and visit. Whereas David G. Barnes exemplified the true meaning of a dedicated public servant. He was instrumental in several town projects, including the pedestrian bridge reconstruction, the Harvey Clay Nesbit Park dedication, water and sewer system improvements throughout town, and several annexations and subdivision developments. Whereas David G. Barnes served as a teacher for twenty-eight years at Waxaw Elementary. He was a role model, mentor, cheerleader, helper to all his students, and he remains one of the most highly respected educators in the history of Waxaw. Whereas on August twenty-eighth, two thousand and nine, David G. Barnes was honored for his impact on the lives and history of Waxaw with the dedication of the David G. Barnes Park. Whereas David G. Barnes was devoted to his family, friends, and students and will be missed by all those whose lives he touched during his life. Now, therefore being proclaimed that the Waxaw Board of Commissioners hereby memorializes David G. Barnes for his distinguished and impressive career in education..." David G. Barnes for his distinguished and impressive career in education and local government, his life and memory will be sorely missed but highly cherished and revered. And further being proclaimed, I, Robert J. Murray, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the town of Waxaw and the state of North Carolina, that this proclamation be forwarded to the family of David G. Barnes with the deepest respect and utmost sympathy of the members of this board. Hopefully to be duly adopted on this twenty-third day of January twenty-twenty-four.
Sorry for your loss. It seems like we also lost somebody.
So we have a, uh, a, uh, copy of the, uh, proclamation here for you to take with you back to, uh, Texas, as well as a key to the town.
Oh, wow.
And, uh, in memory of David G. Barnes, along with his years as the, uh, Waxaw Board of Commissioners. So we are very welcome.
Thank you all so much. Um, one of the things, I'm so elated that you all did that. My dad would be very proud of, um, what you all have done in his honor and my family is very proud of that also. Um, my dad served this community for such a long time as a schoolteacher, but not only as a schoolteacher, but as a commissioner. And one of the things that he loved is seeing how the city has grown. He used to consider it like the little quaint town where everybody knew everybody, but as it started growing, we just loved driving through Waxaw and he just loved the growth that he's seen. And even, I moved to Texas in twenty-twenty. When I moved to Dallas, I was taking a class and this professor didn't even know where I was from. He was talking in class one day and he mentioned Waxaw and I went up afterwards and I asked him, I said, "How do you know about Waxaw? I'm thinking it's a little town." But he knew about it because of the jar center. So you all are making a very big impact and I wanna thank you for what you've done and the legacy of the park. My family really appreciates that, so thank you so much.
I'll get you in Waxaw Creamery too.
And mayor, if you could, uh, uh, request, uh, adoption of that proclamation?
Yes. Could I get a motion to adopt the proclamation? Resolution... There it is. Two zero two four zero zero three.
Two zero two four three. P R O two Z, P R O two Z. Okay. Motion to approve proclamation, P R O, resolution two zero two four zero zero three.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Proclamation is hereby adopted. Congratulations. Okay, new, we, no public hearings, no old business, so we will jump to new business. Um, I believe we have a presentation on the adoption of resolution twenty-two four zero three to declare the intent to support the authorization of the DOT to consider the abandonment of a portion of Pine Oak Road. This is a part of the Prescott Village project and tying some of the roads together and getting, uh, Pine Oak connected to Prescott.
That's correct. Go ahead. So like the mayor had said, this is a resolution of intent. Uh, this is one of the steps in the process, kind of a chicken and the egg scenario with DOT. We first have to let DOT know that we want the resolution of intent to abandon the portion of its, of the road segment and then DOT proceeds with abandoning the road and we take over maintenance of that portion of the road. So for tonight, uh, what we're talking about where exactly it is, so this would be, the town would like to request that the North Carolina Department of Transportation, they banned, abandoned a portion approximately two thousand two hundred and seventy-five feet or point four three one miles of Pine Oak Road from east of the existing bridge, that's on Pine Oak Road, to NC sixteen. So that's the, that's the segment there shown in blue. NC DOT would continue to remain, uh, continue to maintain the portion shown in red, approximately forty-three eighty feet or point eight two nine miles. The reason why, um, this is important is because this will help get traffic over from, from Pine Oak Road, where you see a lot of those drivers trying to make a left on Pine Oak Road now, to a controlled, signalized location where that left turn movement will be protected. So this abandonment of the road section, segment will allow the adjacent development to construct a mini roundabout on the proposed town maintained portion of Pine Oak Road. Previously, just to provide some context, this was the S curve previously talked about years ago. This is the similar concept with a mini roundabout attached to it. This tie, this will ultimately tie in Prescott Glen Parkway with Pine Oak Road, which will provide drivers with a route to access the existing traffic signal, um, at the intersection of Prescott Glen and NC sixteen or Providence Road. Ultimately, this will help to improve traffic flow and safety as drivers will now have that protected left turn movement at a traffic signal location, whereas previously, right now, they do not. It's an unprotected movement at Pine Oak Road and trying to take that left, especially in the afternoon peak, is difficult and we've seen, um, accidents there as well. So with that out of the way, I'll open the floor to questions that you may have and then the request action tonight, which is to adopt the resolution of intent.
Any questions from anyone? Is this part of a, uh, traffic mitigation from the Prescott Glen Project?
So it is. So it is part of a, um, identified traffic impact analysis mitigation, uh, that was identified within the TIA for them to provide that connection from Prescott Glen over to Pine Oak Road.
Anything else? Could I get a motion to adopt the resolution in front of us?
Motion to adopt resolution RES two zero two four zero zero three, declaring intent and support of authorizing NC DOT to consider abandonment of a portion of Pine Oak Road.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any eyes have it? Resolution twenty-two four zero zero three is hereby adopted. Okay, so next up, we have the very serious issue of rules and procedures for the rec barn. Dina.
Good evening. I'm your parking rec director, Dina Sowinski. I'm here tonight to talk about our new wonderful facility coming soon, uh, to Waxaw and it's for the rules and procedures, so we make sure we play safely and we'll move ahead. So the new rec barn is located just a few blocks from downtown. Uh, the inside of the, uh, new rec center is programic space. Uh, we're also utilizing some of the, uh, previous, um, space, uh, for training, uh, that was a big citizen ask as well. So we are keeping some of those same spaces. Programs and events that can, are gonna be a, at the barn, um, are, are senior fitness, um, yoga, all of our active recreation is gonna be there. Also, a wonderful place for our hero, um, activities to go to when we have weather issues, which might be an issue for tomorrow's hero. Uh, so we're looking forward to that. And then smaller events can go in, um, our larger building in the back, which is gonna help us have Plan B and C ready, um, when those weather events happen. The basic information about, um, the rec barn is a place for us to enjoy. We did not have a facility like this before, um, and so this is gonna be a huge box for us. It's a game changer for Waxaw and, um, the usage for her citizens. The hours are located there and just the basic information. About the rules and procedures. So the rules and procedures are set up in these categories and we basically list everything out, so they're very easy to understand and we will have, um, rules and procedures also posted at the rec center, um, and will be posted online as well. How we came to this spot. So we went through our advisory board, um, also staff looked at, um, rules and procedures from other rec centers. We also checked with our league of municipality, our risk division, to go over all of our rules and they gave their suggestion. Uh, Mr. Charlie, uh, was, uh, gracious enough to look over the rules, um, as well and gave his suggestions and okay. And now we're here. We're, uh, our last stop is y'all and to give the okay for us to put that into ordinance. Um, and if you have any questions, um, this is at that time where questions and, uh, the motion to adopt the barn rules and procedures as presented.
Questions? One question I had, who can rent the rec barn?
Um, are, all of our citizens can rent and are non-citizens. There is a fee associated, just like a fee for a, um, any of our shelters now, um, or at our athletic facility as well. Um, we will have those all posted. It actually is already a part of our fee schedule, cause we thought ahead and have it already on there. Um, so we can actually, um, yeah, give the, the okay as long as it meets our, we do have rules on, on, um, activities kind of thing, so it's gonna meet within those rules as you just, that you are going to say, yay.
And then, uh, when are we looking to open then? I think a lot of people are very interested in knowing that.
It, I, Ashley's gonna say that in my report later, but we'll go ahead into that right now. So, um, the ribbon cutting is scheduled for right now at March the eighth and y'all all will have meeting invites, I promise, um, and a special invitation. The, it will be at three o'clock. We're gonna have a, uh, a s- a small ceremony to say all the thank yous and then we're gonna have a good time. We're gonna show off all the cool amenities that the rec center will give for our community and we're gonna finish out the night with a movie night.
Great.
It's exciting.
So I would like to get a, uh, can I get a motion then to adopt the rec barn rules?
Motion to adopt rec barn rules and procedures as presented.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We now have rules.
Yay. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, now at this time, we will go ahead into the leadership reports.
Alright, thank you, mayor. Um, I have a few things to share this evening. Looking forward to the retreat this Thursday and Friday and just one little note, if, if time permits on Friday afternoon, uh, we, uh, have, will have an opportunity to take a quick tour of the rec barn if you'd like. So we'll just see how, how, uh, early we get out of here and that'll be an opportunity if time permits. The, uh, twenty-twenty-four elected officials reception is Thursday, February fifteenth from five-thirty to seven PM at the Ag Center and you can RSVP for yourself or staff will be happy to RSVP for you. The town and state dinner will be hitting the road this year. The closest one to us will be on March sixth in Concord. This is another opportunity for, uh, board to interact with other local govern- government leaders as well as our state legislators. It, uh, believe in historically, it's only been in Raleigh, so it's nice that, uh, they're going to go in some different locations. So once we find out, uh, when the, uh, invites go out, we'll let you know there. And another save the date, City Vision Conference will be April twenty-third through the twenty-fifth and that will be in Winston-Salem this year. And lastly, we have tentatively scheduled the fiscal year twenty-three audit presentation for your next meeting, uh, February thirteenth, I believe it is, so that our auditor, uh, Strickland-Harty, Travis will be here to, uh, give you all the, all the good stuff about our, uh, last fiscal year. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Jeff. Uh, business development, Ashley.
Um, okay, so we're gonna talk about a big project that our departments were working on right now, our accreditation process, uh, with the National Main Street Center. So each year, we complete a self-assessment, um, with North Carolina Main Street as well as National Main Street to determine if our, um, program has been accredited. So last year, we were accredited, so it's that same process that we went through in twenty-twenty-three. Um, there are a lot of baseline requirements that we have to have in order for our downtown program to be accredited. Um, those include having a board of directors, employing a full-time downtown director, having a mission, vision, and, um, transformation strategies for your program, um, work plans that then connect back to those, that mission, vision, and transformation strategies, as well as meet that Main Street four-point approach. Um, you have to have a dedicated budget for your Main Street program, support from the municipality, and then report your reinvestment stats to North Carolina Main Street each year. Um, in addition to those baseline requirements, there are also six standards, um, with multiple indicators in each standard that we have to meet. Um, those six standards are broad-based community support, inclusive leadership and organizational capacity, um, diversified funding and sustainable program operations, strategy-driven programming, preservation-based economic development, and demonstrated impact and results. Uh, I know that's a lot of info and I will say it's a really long accreditation process, um, but it's definitely worth it. I think it gives our downtown Waxaw board and you guys, the board of commissioners, really good information on how we can improve our downtown program over the next year. Um, the due date for that is February ninth, so, um, Laura and I are kinda completing that now, work with our downtown Waxaw Association Board, um, and then get that submitted in February. Um, lastly, our, um, next big event for downtown Waxaw is First Fridays, so that's next Friday, February second. Um, we have been working on a placemaking project under the water tank, moving some Adarondak chairs and picnic tables over. So that will be complete by next First Fridays. So we're throwing a little cozy night under the water tank. So we've got a little coffee food truck that's gonna come out and serve some hot drinks. Um, we've got acoustic music that we'll have out there as well as some fire pits. Um, plus a lot of our businesses will be open late, um, whether you wanna go eat dinner or go shopping a little bit while you're downtown, so come join us next Friday.
Thank you, Ashley.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Chief Dexter Wilson.
Good evening. I wanted to cover some crime stats that we've had from twenty-twenty-two compared to twenty-twenty-three, as well as some other stuff we've been doing with the community. Uh, so part one crimes, which are, uh, murder, rape, robbery, assault, violent crimes, anything like that, we were down twenty-eight percent compared twenty, uh, twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three. Part two crimes, which are drug, assault, forgery, fraud, embezzlement, all that kinda stuff, is down five percent. Uh, some of the big ones to note, uh, assault down fifty-five percent, violent crimes down twenty-six percent, uh, burglaries down, or excuse me, burglaries are up thirteen percent. That was a non-residential burg- burglary, it was a burglary to, uh, a couple businesses. Uh, larceny was down thirty-three percent and auto theft down forty-three percent. So kudos to the community for locking your vehicles. Uh, that plays a big part, as we all know. A lot of them go through the neighborhoods and just check door handles and if your door is locked, they're not gonna break the windows unless they see something of value, like your purse or computer or something in the car. So great job, uh, keeping those cars locked. Uh, on the, on the part two crimes, uh, drug arrests were down fifty-three percent, embezzlement was down fifty percent, fraud, forgery, and counterfeiting is up forty-six percent. So it's a big one. Watch your credit reports. Uh, if you have, uh, ID theft monitoring, anything like that, it's great to have. Uh, another thing you can do is put a freeze on your credit. So you can put a freeze through all three credit bureaus and it freezes it or, uh, put a fra- a fraud alert on it. It, it'll help out a lot. So we're seeing that a lot over the, over the past couple of years, it just keeps rising. Uh, twenty-twenty-three criminal investigations, we had a hundred and forty-nine felony cases assigned, seventy-three of those cases were cleared by arrest, nine were unfounded, thirty-one cases remain active at this time and the others were cleared or moved to inactive. We had a total of twenty-eight thousand five hundred and eighteen calls for service in twenty-twenty-three. Out of those eighteen thousand ninety-seven were self-initiated. Those being neighborhood patrols, business checks, uh, things like that. Uh, what we really tried to implement in twenty twenty-three was watching those hotspot areas, whether it be for time of year or time of day when crimes are occurring. We try to hit those areas hard. Uh, like say the last, the first week of summer, kids got out of school, guess what crime goes up? Car B and E's. So we try to hit those really hard and, uh, it, it appears to be working. Our narcotics section, they had forty-seven arrests and ninety-six charges within the town limits of Waxaw. Uh, they also work with Homeland Security Investigations, where combined with H S I, they seized forty-eight thousand two hundred and fifty-six pounds of narcotics. Uh, they shut down five labs where they were producing, uh, fentanyl, methamphetamine and other items. Um, they seized fifty-five firearms. They made two hundred and thirty-six arrests. They seized seven million five hundred and forty-five thousand eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars. They also worked with H S I Financial Group where they seized eighty-five firearms and they seized three million three hundred and fifty-four thousand four hundred and eighty-one dollars. And all, uh, parts of that money, depending on how many hours we have on the cases with them, comes back to the town of Waxaw and that's where our federal forfeiture money comes from. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you for your diligence and hard work Dexter. You guys do a great work. Next up, we have Fire Department Chief Greg Sharp.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners. Uh, just a quick update, do a, kinda do a quarterly so I compare the last quarter to this quarter. Um, our goal is to get to, uh, eighty percent of the incidents in our fire district in less than eight minutes, which requires staffing and the proper location. So those are the numbers that I, I try to point out for y'all. Um, so in the first quarter of F Y twenty-four, that way. Um, we had six person staffing eighty-five point six percent of the time. Um, the six is important to us because then we can put three at station eighteen and three down at station twenty-seven, which means response times get better because we're not responding from station eighteen all the way into the south end. Um, we had a drop to seventy-seven point five percent and that's really the holidays, um, in our part-time staff, wanting to stay home with their family or having other commitments at work. Um, but the good thing was our eight-minute response time, as you can see, stayed pretty stable. So we were able to staff twenty-seven fairly well. And you can notice overall, we actually did better by three tenths of a percent. Um, and seven tenths of a percent out of station eighteen, which is right here on Waxaw Parkway. Station twenty-seven, as you would imagine, if we don't have six, that's the station that goes unmanned. So their response times dropped a little bit. And I keep pushing the wrong button. Uh, so again, what, what does all this mean? So like, uh, this last quarter, we had a commercial structure fire down on Helms Road. Our crews got there within five to six minutes and was able to hold it to the bay of origin. So the entire business wasn't destroyed, just the one bay, the car that first ignited. Obviously, smoke damage goes throughout most buildings. Um, we responded also to a gunshot wound that quarter. And that was a call that went out at the same time we were on another structure fire, reported structure fire up in Lawson and this one came in down on the south side of town. Uh, so thankfully twenty-seven was staffed and could get there. And then on our south side, we had an, an overdose. Uh, when we arrived, the person was agonal breathing, which means very slowly, very shallow. We administered Narcan a couple of times, assisted their ventilations and then reversed the, the overdose. They were able to breathe and transported to the hospital in stable condition. Um, so those are the reasons we shoot for these response times is to get there so we can, uh, probably take care of people at the right time. Um, just to show again, the reason we want the staffing to be up and we prefer to have, we're fully budgeted for ten, five full-time, five part-time positions. Um, is, as you can see here, twenty-eight days last quarter, we received two calls at the same time. So again, if we only have one truck staff, that means that call goes to a mutual aid company or waits until we can get cleared. Three days, there were three calls in progress at the exact same time. And eight days, there were four calls in progress while we were already on another call. So again, it's good to have that staff to get that truck out, um, when more than one call comes in at the same time. Also, what do we do other than just calls? Um, again, we partner with the town of Waxaw on all the events that go on. Um, anytime we're there, we bring fire safety information, we're recruiting. Um, and again, it's a great partnership between us and the town, uh, to make sure that happens. Uh, every five years that we get inspected by the State Office of the Fire Marshal. In September, we got inspected, um, awaiting their, uh, rating for us. We were a four throughout anywhere that somebody's went five miles of a station, we're ra- we're rated a class four. I expect to go down to a three. Um, and the only thing I've gotten back so far is that we did pass. We are still a fire department, so yay us. Um, the big projects, I'm about done updating our dispatch protocols, which has been a, a nightmare trying to get done between us and Union County. Um, but that should make our response times a little better and pinpoint better which truck goes where and how often. Um, we've updated our professional development program where we've developed a master firefighter program. A lieutenant, uh, rank is coming online. Captains, we just promoted our second full-time captain to give some consistent supervision to our young firefighters, um, which has already paid dividends in just the two weeks that he's been there. Um, and we're still working on developing the assistant chief and fire chief, uh, progression. Uh, because what I would like to have happen when I'm ready to leave is that somebody's already there in the pipeline that can easily just step in instead of having to do an exhaustive search and try and figure out who out there is, is good to come in. Uh, again, the, one of the things that's been a, an unbelievable headache is we're building station sixty-three on Waxaw Creek Road. Um, it took calling state reps, state senators and actually the president pro tem of the North Carolina Senate and N C D E Q after the president pro tem got involved. Uh, we got a, our permit for stormwater in about two hours after his conversation with them. And, uh, we're still planning for stage sixty-four on Kensington Drive to better serve Millbridge and Lawson. Uh, most likely, as we've talked in our, with, uh, Jeff Wells and our state reps, probably best to kinda ease through this year because it's a short session. And then next year, when the next long session is, is get in and talk about what kind of grant funding is out there and other assistance so that it doesn't fall completely on the citizens here because it'll be more of a regional type event to do that. And that's all I got.
Thank you very much. Let's do a good job. Planning inspections, Ms. Lisa Thompson. Come on down.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of development updates. We have three projects under construction, the preserve, Old Town Village, Blythe Milltown Homes. Um, recently there was a press release, uh, for Lowe's Food Grocery Store. Um, we have the plans now online for anyone to see. They plan on beginning construction this summer, July of twenty-four. That'll be dependent on sewer. Upcoming prop- projects, we have a public hearing for a text amendment, updating that parkland fee in Lou. And, uh, a change to our sign ordinance. Uh, those notices have been published, so that'll be, um, at your next meeting in February. As far as development projects, we have two in the pipeline. Trails End is a hundred and sixty acres along Highway seventy-five near the South Carolina State Line. Most likely we'll have a public hearing in March. And then Emerson Park is, um, a little over a hundred acres downtown. Um, we've made some changes to the road and connectivity, so that'd put a delay in the T I A outcomes. So that will most likely come to a public hearing in late April or early May. Um, other than that, I'm looking forward to the retreat this Thursday and Friday. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next up is Dina, Parks and Rec.
Evening again. So to give you some heads up about some cool programming coming up, our program guide, uh, is now available, um, at the rec centers or at town hall and online. I'd love to have y'all a part of some really cool programming coming up. Uh, tomorrow, we actually have Hero and it's Pirate Day, um, at Barnes Park. Uh, but check the weather before you come. And then every Wednesday at three, um, is Hero. So next week is gonna be Rockstar Party Day. Um, and continue it on, uh, until the summer months and then we'll move to the morning hours. We also have youth ballet, senior coffee coming up next week. Um, Zumba, inclusive adult programming for Zumba as well. Inclusive adult program for yoga and mindfulness. And then our, um, our general mindo- mindfulness for yoga. These type of, uh, programs will be moved to the new rec center, uh, when we're up and running. So we're really extremely happy about those. Give you some heads up on some upcoming events. So there is about ten acres on the other side of seventy-five. We've been working on it for about two years now and it's almost ready. On, uh, March the first at eleven, um, A M., we are going to have the ribbon cutting for our downtown park. Um, we're super excited and we'll have a, a ceremony and to thank all of our, our key players. And then we're gonna have music, food trucks, activities, tours. It's just a wonderful afternoon, um, to celebrate this huge milestone for, for Waxaw. And then I'm gonna tag team Ms. Ashley and we're gonna go into, um, First Fridays for downtown. So you can enjoy on the rest of your evening, um, in, um, our downtown area. And then, as I said earlier, the rec barn opening is on March the eighth. So it's just a, it's gonna be a week of parties. Uh, so that next Friday night, we will have that ribbon cutting at three o'clock. And then it will also have our, our ceremony. And then the party and activities will be, um, next and then we'll finish off with movie night. Do y'all have any questions? All right, now get ready, get your dancing shoes on. We're about to have some fun. Thank you.
Sounds like a lot of fun. Ah. Mr. Matthews, I hear you've been here twenty-two years. Is that true?
Yes. Been in Waxaw since before. Yes. I remember Mr. Martin, well, he taught all of my kids. Good man. Um, a while back, we did some paving on North Broad Street and widened it. So what happened? Every time we get a hard rain, it washes Jim Howard's driveway out. So we worked on that last week. In the last big rain we got, it's, we worked fine, so I think we got all that settled. We did some re-striping downtown in front of the beet merchant, uh, putting no parking out there for her. Because when people try to make that turn and somebody's parked there, they can't swing it. Uh, this is the last week for leaf season. We done two hundred and thirty-six loaves already and probably got about three loaves on the ground and we'll be done. Uh, we starting this week grinding sidewalks and replacing sidewalks. Uh, we're gonna start pruning trees in Millbridge next week. Uh, county arbaces coming down and will work with us. We started replacing some dead trees, uh, leaf season put us behind a little bit. I met with the developer in Millbridge on phase six today. Uh, everything's done in there, so they're probably getting ready to bring it to us. They gotta replace thirty-seven trees and certify the wall. If, we'll be ready to take that over. Uh, did a proof roll on town campus this week on the parking and the drive. It's not real good, but we got it covered up before the rains hit, so hopefully it's on. We got one more proof roll before they pave it, so anything's bad, we'll find it. Uh, did an inspection with the engineering department on Pineup Road, which is a pretty good road. They, uh, chip sealed it about ten years ago and then overlaid on top of it, so it's like a double roof. It's pretty good. Uh, working on the budget and ready for the retreats this week. And we had three open and closes at the cemetery. For some reason, they come in threes. That's what more happens. And touching on what Marvin said, we're all gonna work in here twenty-two years. It is like a big family. And it gets more and more like that every year. Enjoy it, so thank y'all for it.
Thank you. Be a part of it. Uh, this time we'll open it up for Commissioner comments.
Just wanna say thank you to all the residents, both here and online, for your attention to the matters of our local government. And thank you to the staff for all your hard work and the preparations of these meetings. Leading up to this meeting, I participated in the two-by-two process that the staff organizes. For those who are not aware, two-by-two refers to the splitting of this board into groups of two so as to avoid the limits of open meeting statutes. These statutes are intended to ensure that decision-making on public matters is public by specifying a maximum number of officials who can meet privately to discuss government business. The rationale for the two-by-two meetings is that they allow the staff to take the temperature of the board on various matters before discussing them publicly. The idea is that this will save the staff from spending too much time on something that will not survive public presentation before the board. But this two-by-two process also costs the staff time because they have to make the same presentation three times before three different pairings of board members. We're spending a lot of resources on avoiding public scrutiny. The two-by-two process also violates the spirit of open meeting statutes and that consensus is developed behind closed doors. In my opinion, this manufactured consent has the effect of suppressing citizen engagement in our local government. People feel left out of the decision-making process. We've added this as a discussion item on our upcoming retreat this Thursday and Friday. So, uh, if anyone is interested, um, in that discussion, um, please attend or listen online. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Okay, I would like to entertain a motion at this point to go to closed session. We will be speaking about the replacement of our town attorney, Charlie, who will be retiring soon.
You need a motion to go into that public sa- uh, closed session and it needs to identify specifically the statutory references shown on, under the closed session there.
So I would like a motion to go into closed session pursuant to statutory refer- uh, regulations N C G S one four-three dash three-one-eight point one-one A six to discuss the personal matters involving the town attorney.
Personnel.
Personnel, sorry.
And personnel is, that is the statutory, uh, slam- the, the board has two employees. The town attorney and the town manager. Otherwise, personnel matters are not subject to your scrutiny. So it, it obviously identifies it's either gonna be Jeff or myself, but you also are not supposed to say who it is that you're identifying going into. But you also need in the motion to go in there, who you want to be in that meeting. It's with you, with the board, the elected officials. You would want to include the clerk, perhaps, and perhaps the town, uh, manager and perhaps me. So you would want to include that in the motion to go into.
Okay. So I would like to get a motion to go into closed session pursuant to N C G S one four-three dash three-one-eight point one-one A six to discuss personnel matters with the entirety of the commission, the town attorney and the town manager.
Motion to go into closed session pursuant to N C G S one four-three dash three-one-eight dot eleven A six to discuss personal matters to include in the closed session, the town attorney, the town manager and the clerk.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We will now proceed to closed session.
Hi. That was fun. So at this point we will go ahead and entertain a motion to adjourn this public meeting.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are so adjourned. Thank you folks. Have a great night.
Goodnight, all.
Goodnight, all.